Good evening, everybody. Thank you for making it here. Hopefully, everyone rode their bicycles because gas is over five bucks a gallon. So this is the regular scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council. It's Monday, June the 6th, 2022. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening will be given by the Bishop Dorothy Sharad of Lilly of the Valley Church. And good evening, Bishop, and thank you for being here.
Good evening, and thank you for inviting me. Father God, it's in the name of Jesus that we come this afternoon, this evening. We come, Lord, to say thank you, for you blessed us and you kept us. We thank you, Father God, for how you covered our city, for how you continue to protect us. Father God, we thank you that you have allowed us another chance as citizens of this community to be able to come together, to express our concerns, to hear each other, and to be in tune with what your will is for our community. And so, Father, we're asking you tonight that you will govern our minds, that you will keep us ever loving and kind, that we will learn how to work together for the betterment of this, our community. This is the place that you have provided for us, and we're grateful and we're thankful that you've allowed us the privilege to live here in South Haven, this beautiful city. And we realize that it's only because of you that the enemy has not come in and tried to destroy and to tear down what we've worked so hard to build up. So, Father God, we say thank you. We pray for our leadership, for our men and women that are standing in the gap to make decisions concerning this city. And we continue to pray for them and for their families. We pray for our law enforcement. We pray for our police department, our fire department, our EMTs, our hospitals, our nurses and doctors, all of those that are on the front line that are having to care for those that have been stricken in this pandemic. Father God, we pray, God, that you will continue to bless our children, that you will continue to keep our families safe. We pray for the families in Buffalo, New York, for the families in Texas. We pray for those families that are suffering all over the world from gun violence. Father God, we know that you're sovereign, and we believing and we trusting in you, and we ask that you continue to give us guidance, that you will continue to give our leaders wisdom, knowledge, and understanding as to make the right decisions. Father God, we pray that you will continue to provide resources, that those that are suffering will have the treatments that they need, that they can be positive and better community citizens. And we pray that we're able to work together as men and women, that we will stand up, that we will be men and women of integrity, that we will lift our voices, because you said righteousness exalts a nation, but sin is a reproach to any people. So, Father God, we pray for our leaders, we pray for our families, that you will continue to bless and keep them. And as we're coming into this summer, Father God, we pray that you will cover our city with your blood, that you will keep our children safe. Oh, God, we need you as never before. We're leaning and depending, and we're trusting in you. Our hope is in you. You are our hope, and we thank you. We give you glory, honor, and praise. This we ask in Jesus' name. Thank God. Amen.
All right. Now, if you'll join for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, equal and equal, liberty, justice, and for all.
All right, roll call. Megan.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. And that will take us to the approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion second to approve the agenda. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It is approved. Next, we have a very nice group of individuals out here, and we have the South Haven Area Community Foundation president out here, and I will have him come on up and recognize some recipients of the foundation awards. So, good evening, Roger.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council members, city staff, and guests. Thank you for allowing the South Haven Community Foundation to present their 2022 grant award recipients tonight. I'm Roger Baglin, president of the South Haven Community Foundation. The foundation was incorporated as a nonprofit corporation in 2005 to be a home for local endowment and scholarship funds. As an all-volunteer organization, our primary focus is to provide grants to nonprofit organizations and public institutions in the greater South Haven area. Since 2005, the foundation has distributed grants and scholarships in excess of $650,000. These grants were announced and are made possible by the generosity of South Haven community members over the years, such that from our humble beginnings in 2005, we've now grown to over $4 million in total assets at the end of last fiscal year. Some of our more notable grants that many people are aware of include matching grant fund drives in 2020 for the Splash Bed and last year for the Michigan Maritime Museum. But enough about the foundation. Tonight, we're here to celebrate the many well-deserving nonprofit organizations that make the South Haven area so special. In 2022, the foundation is awarding, from our general endowment fund, $55,000 in community support grants. Our youth advisory council endowment fund is awarding $8,000 in grants. In addition, the four scholarship funds that we administer at the foundation, the Community Memorial Scholarship, the Grace Calvin Scholarship, the Richard and Mary Barden Scholarship, and the Mark Cosley STEM Scholarship, last week awarded $44,600 to 30 graduating seniors from South Haven High School. So, a pretty good week, I would say, for the organization. So, this year's grant recipients from the community foundations endowment fund, if there are any representatives present, please stand when I call off your organization's name. This year, they are the South Haven Speaker Series, South Haven Steel Header Sport Fishing Association, Beautify Pullman, South Haven Project Curb, South Haven Theater Series, We Care Community Resource Center, the South, or excuse me, Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center, Foundry Hall for both the Jazz Festival and the Riverfront Concert Series, Forever Curious Children's Museum for the Mitten Museum here in South Haven, South Haven Scott Club, Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum, YDC PAL, Boys and Girls Club of Benton Harbor for the South Haven operations, the South Haven Boating Foundation, South Haven Center for the Arts, and the South Haven Performance Series. Thank you.
And we will give you all a chance to sneak out and enjoy your night. And congratulations to everybody.
Yeah.
Lots of amazing organizations right there. All right. That's a lot of good people, a lot of good stuff being done. So, that takes us to the update from our Van Buren County Commissioner, Gail Patterson Gladney. And good evening, Gail.
Happy Monday.
Happy Monday back to you. Okay, I have some items I just want to address. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. We have a new interim county administrator, Ryan Post. He was the director of the Finance Department for the county, but because Frank Hardister has, is no longer with the county, then we have Ryan Post, and the job will be posted, and we're hoping to advertise for that position as county commissioner, I mean county administrator. As many of you might have known or heard before, the ARPA funding requests, all of those were due May 31st, but hopefully, if we do get more funding, we can open them back up in the future. Bob Kirk is, has retired, or is retiring, as lieutenant office of domestic preparedness, and Deputy Skinner will be taking Bob's place. I think most of you know that about the news release from EnterG that the final time that the reactor, well, the Palisades Power Plant safely removed the nuclear reactor from service for the final time on May 20th. It was supposed to be the 31st, but they felt that it was safest to do it May 20th. And I can give this to, okay. Many residents are experiencing stress during these continuing COVID times, and again, I'd like to mention that Michigan Stay Well Counseling is available 24/7. It's the COVID-19 hotline. So even if you don't have COVID, but if you've lived through the COVID last two years plus continuation now, and anyone who's experiencing mental health issues, stress, they can call And these are trained counselors who will answer the phone. Once you call that number, just press 8, and you can talk to a Michigan Stay Well counselor. There's also National Disaster Distress Helpline, National Suicide Prevention Lifeline, and I'm going to give all this information here. Thank you. The Domestic Violence Coalition is going to have a fundraiser, and they invite everyone to a spaghetti dinner located at the Paw Paw Eagles Club in Lawton. That's going to be June 10th, which is coming up soon, from 4:00 to 7:00. There is a price of $10 per plate, but it is a good cause, and I just wanted to mention the County Domestic Violence Coalition. The plate includes salad, breadstick, and spaghetti, and they will also accept donations. So I will give this also to you. Thank you. I don't know if many of you are aware of the Van Buren County Community Health Needs Survey from Bronson. The surveys have to be completed by June 11th, and maybe our mayor knows about those surveys. Okay, so I'm going to also give this information to you. It's a good way for the community to express what they would like to see to help with the health of our community, if it's better parks or exercise opportunities that are free or less expensive. If areas in the city have food deserts, or they would like fresher fruits, vegetables, the survey allows for the community to have input. One thing I also wanted to mention is at our library, members of the community can sign up for Wednesdays at Wolf Lake for your children, and that's the Fish Hatchery on M43. The dates are June 22nd and 29th, July 13th, 20th, and 20th, from 10 to 12, ages 4 to 10. And it's a summer program that provides outdoor educational experience while exploring everything there is to see at the Wolf Lake State Fish Hatchery. So, this is also for you. Thank you. Almost done. There's a virtual zoning reform watch party. I don't know if the city council is familiar with that, but it's from Southwest Michigan Planning Commission. I got an email on it. They want us to pass on the information. Their Southwest Michigan Planning Commission will be hosting a watch party for Michigan Association of Planning's Virtual Housing Summit, and that's on June 15th. And there is a cost, $15 a person, and it can be paid online or by check. And I will also give this to you, if you would like to pass that on. The last item I'd like to mention is caring circle. I think a lot of you already might have heard about caring circle, but recently, I met with Angela Labarca, and she is a community relations representative. I didn't realize that you don't have to be in hospice to use caring circle. There's a lot of services that they provide. If you would like to, if you're a senior or someone disabled, and you'd like to stay in your home, they can help you with that. They also have veteran support services, planning your care for the future. It's not too early to start, even if you're younger. Grief healing and education, and there's quite a lot in this packet, but I will hand this over to Kate Hosier, and hopefully, you'll be able to take a look at that. Do you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I do have a question, Gail. I wanted to know the housing summit, you said June 15th. I wanted to know, is it online or is it in person?
That is online, and if you're not able to make it at that time, they do provide for you to, you have to pay extra, but you can look at it later.
Then I wanted to know, what are some of the things that will be discussed?
I don't know.
Do you know?
I don't know. Kate, do you have?
I don't know. It's been, it's being put on by the Michigan Association of Planners, and so they're having a virtual workshop now, this upcoming one in June. I believe there's another one scheduled for later this year as well.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. But you're welcome. I could try to get more information, and I would give it to Kate, and maybe she can get that out to you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other questions?
Questions?
No.
Thank you, Gail. Appreciate it. Thanks for coming in. And that will take us to the Consent Agenda Items A through J.
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Items A through J.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? See none. This is a roll call vote.
Arnold.
Yes.
Onuki.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That takes us to old business, and City Council will be asked to consider the approval of the following resolutions related to the fiscal year 2022-23 budget. First, we have Resolution 2022-16, which is a resolution adopting the 2022-23 fiscal year budget for component unit funds of the city of South Haven.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-16, a resolution adopting the 2022-23 fiscal year budget for component unit funds of the city of South Haven, Michigan.
Second.
We got a motion. We've got a second. All right. Kate, I guess I could have asked, we could roll, serve all these together, but we'll go through this one, see how we do.
Sure. As you know, this is our budget adoption meeting. I do have Michelle Argu, our Finance Director, if you have any questions on how we get to the millage, how the taxable values are established. I did have that ready. We also did talk about that a little bit at our last meeting. The resolution before you is for the component unit funds of the city of South Haven. Michelle, do you want to jump in on anything about those? Don't forget to turn on your microphone.
No, I don't have anything to add on those. Those were on the budget documents that you've been seeing, the three for the different enterprise, the component, and the general funds, all in there.
Any questions up here? Any public questions on the first part here? I'll take the rest of them as one.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I do not have all my notes, and I thought you would be doing them all at the same time, so I apologize if some of the comments are related to the others. But as I've stated before, I'm concerned with some of the budgets, because although you do not hit a negative, you do not hit a negative because you have a surplus. So, in some of the budgets, the expenses exceed the income. And so, at a time when everybody's having to tighten their belt, I would have more appreciated that the city did the same. And I'm disappointed that not all of the budgets have expenses within the income. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, see none. Got another question. So, I got a motion. I've got a second to approve Resolution 2022-16. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. All right, 2022-17, which is a resolution adopting the 2022-23 fiscal year budget for general, special revenue, debt service, capital projects, and fiduciary funds for the city of South Haven.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-17, a resolution adopting the 2022-23 fiscal year budget for general, specific revenue, debt service, capital projects, and fiduciary funds of the city of South Haven.
Second.
All right, we got a motion. We got a second. Anything special on this one, Michelle? Nothing new. All right. Public questions? It's easy. All right. Motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We're approved. All right, let's do the next two together. 2022-18, which is a resolution adopting the 2022-23 fiscal year budget for enterprise and internal service funds of the city of South Haven. And then let's do 2022-19, which is a resolution setting the 2022 property tax millage.
Make a motion for Resolution 2022-18 and Resolution 2022-19.
Second.
Motion, second. Public questions.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. This one I knew was separate. So, with regard to the tax millage, I appreciate the information about the Headley, but with the property values going up, such that the income to the city is going up, I would have had hoped that the tax millage could have gone down further to have less of an impact on our families that are struggling right now.
Thanks. So, I just want to kind of share in comment that ultimately, kind of with Headley, that property taxes can only grow at the rate of inflation, which was pegged at what?
It was at 3.3% this past year, and that's calculated by the state of Michigan as an average of 12 months.
Okay. So it can't grow any faster than that, so any increases are offset, so basically, property taxes are effectively lowered to offset, so it can't increase.
Yes, and I was going to discuss quickly what is in the agenda about the Headley rollback. And we'll try to bring it up.
It's always good to do that.
Okay, this is the millage reduction fraction calculation worksheet. It's on page 94 of the agenda, and this came from the Van Buren County Equalization Director. It's calculated each year. It's the formula that gives us the Headley rollback. So the formula is the 2021 total taxable value of the unit, that's after March border review numbers, minus the 22 losses, and then multiply that by the inflation rate, which you just explained was a 12-month's average from the state at 3.3%. That's divided by the 2022 taxable value minus the 2022 additions from the assessment rule, and that gives us a millage reduction fraction for this year of .9789. I also want to explain, I also added a table that shows just the city operating millage, and that is a five-year average. It just gives us a look at how the Headley rollback works. So, in 2017, the city actually had a 1 for the millage reduction fraction to 2018, so the millage did not change. In 2018, we're at 10.2171 mills, and this gives us the estimate of the taxes with the Headley rollback. And if there had not been a law for the Headley rollback, then it also gives us what the taxes would have been. And then we also see going forward to 2019 and '20, there were slight rollbacks, and that has to do with the market, how much property is increasing, as well as construction within the city. And that shows that when there's slight changes, then there are a difference of 2019 of only $15,000. And then in 2020, $34,000, that would have been difference if there had been a rollback versus no rollback. Then in '21 and '22, we see when the market took off and there's more construction, the values are growing at a quick rate like they have been, and that makes our rollback actually decrease the millage even more. So, in 2021, we had 10.0076, and then 2022, we come down to a 9.7964. And that shows the differences in the taxes, keeping them lower of in 2021, $126,000 less we collect, and also in 2022, $211,000. So, it shows how it keeps the inflation rate from keeping taxes going up even higher. That's the state law. There is one bad effect to this. It's when the markets go the other way, and if there's a recession or a depression happening, then actually, the millage is permanently rolled back to that. So, if the tax values go down, then that takes all the taxing units down on the revenues, which has happened before. So, and then I want to go next to the, this is part of our resolution, the 2022 tax rate request, and this is showing in column six, the Headley rollback of .9789, which we just showed how to calculate that. And all the millages were reduced by that, except for the Refuge. We have, we can collect up this year up to 1.9587 mills. We had been collecting 1.4 mills for several years, and that was covering the contract for the Refuge Service. And we explained in the documents with the budget that we went from 1.4 to 1.6 mills. That's because of the contract expiring, and then having put it out for bid, and then going into a new contract. This is what it's going to take to cover those expenses. And then also, the last items here in the senior services, they're showing expired. Their millage did expire in December of '21, and they're running it on the election in August, and they collect on the winter tax bill, so they have August and November elections to try to pass their millages and still have them on the tax bills.
Sounds good. That's helpful. Think we should do Headley explanations every year, because it's a little tricky. But as a taxpayer, we like it. Just saying. Any other questions on these two items? Nothing. All right, we've got a motion, a second to approve Resolutions 2022-18 and 2022-19. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are approved. Thanks, Michelle. All right. Next, City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding a commercial rehabilitation abatement application for 764 Lagrange Street. First, we need to hold a public hearing, so we'll take a motion to open that up.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion second to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're opened up. All right. Griffin, you came up. Just want to talk to us? Are you going to tell us what this is about?
I'd be happy to. Thank you for the opportunity. This project intends to invest in the property at 764 Lagrange Street for the purpose of rehabbing an existing building into a more functional office space and warehouse space. Staff and the city attorney have worked with Mr. Dan Jakeway to prepare the proposed resolution before you all this evening, along with the accompanying clawback agreement, which is similar to those used by the city of South Haven in other similar situations. Other than that, just happy to share, this is another project along the Broadway-Lagrange and 140 corridor that the city's been prioritizing over the last couple of years in terms of redevelopment. Happy to do what I can to answer any questions.
Sounds good. How about, well, this is the public part, so why don't we see if anyone from the public has any questions on this first? And if not, we'll close it.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
All right, motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. It's closed. All right. Well, let's go there. Is a developer here?
I don't know if Mr. Jakeway's here this evening. He was.
I got a very well-dressed gentleman in the back who might want to share a little bit. So, how about if I just go ahead? Well, why don't you come on up and maybe let him state your name, address, tell us what we're considering, and then we'll move on.
My name's Dan Jakeway, 764 Lagrange, or 513 Broadway as well. 764 Lagrange or 513 Broadway as well.
Very good.
So we're excited about this project.
Anything else you want to tell us about it? We've read it. I don't know if you want to, for those that are viewing or watching, just to share a little bit of what your plans are.
Obviously, the building was built in 1959, old car dealership. And no central heating, no central air conditioning. It's a fully impacted site, so it's contaminated across the board. So there's a lot of work with that. So it's fun to invest in this great community. So I'm excited about it. And if you have driven by, you've started to see a lot of the work already starting to happen. So I welcome you to stop in and see what's happening.
Sounds good. Yeah, I've noticed the work, and we're excited that you're investing in the community. So that's great.
It's going to look a lot better by the time it's done.
That's great. And we're excited that you're here. Thanks for sharing. I appreciate it. Everybody have any questions? Or let him sit back down.
What kind of business is it again?
You want to share what's going to land in there?
So it's basically property services. So pool company, property management company. So, and one of the existing tenants that when the road shop was at the front of the building, but there was an existing operation at the back. So they are going to continue to operate there. So basically, property services for the community.
When is the plan completion?
Not fast enough, but hopefully, we'll be in by August 1st. So.
Sounds good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All righty, next. So let's go ahead. We'll consider the motion to approve Resolution 2022-20, which is a resolution to approve an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for a proposed renovation project at 764 Lagrange Street.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2022-20, a resolution to approve an application for a commercial rehabilitation exemption certificate for the proposed renovation project at 764 Lagrange Street.
Second. All right, we've got a motion, second. No other questions? All those in favor say aye. Pose no? It's approved. Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck. All right, next. City Council will be asked to take the following actions regarding the Harbor Club condominium planned unit development. So again, we're going to hold a public hearing. So I'll take a motion to open it up.
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Right, motion, second to open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye. All right, we're opened up. Back on?
Back at it. Thank you again for the opportunity. Mr. Scott Sinar, representing the Harbor Club Condominium PUD project, applied for an amendment to the planned unit development, commonly referred to as the Harbor Club, to change the land use types of two lots, units three and four that front baseline road. This PUD has been amended five times since its inception and is now seeking a sixth amendment to eliminate the townhome parking area in the northwest corner of the block, utilizing units one and two alongside Ravine Lane for townhomes and to change the use of units three and four back to single-family homes. Currently, units three and four are permitted for the construction of townhomes, multifamily dwelling units. And this proposed amendment would restore the use to single-family as was originally permitted with the project.
Okay. It was kind of a return back. I mean, like we said, it was kind of returned back to what it was before one of the other amendments more or less.
Before it's been amended, yes. And I have some maps I can pull up if that's helpful for council. Otherwise, you've got a little bit of description in the packet in regard to the motion made by city council, or excuse me, the planning commission, when they recommended approval of the amendment to you all, including the five conditions.
We've got it. So this is the public hearing section. So if anyone has a question, please come on up, state your name and address, and we'll take your question. All right. Want to close it? Regarding the planned unit development at Harbor Club Condom. All right.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion, second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye. Pose no? It's closed up. So next, we will consider the approval of the proposed amendment to the Harbor Club Condominium PUD in accordance with the conditions recommended by the planning commissions, specifically, conditions one through five from the 414, 2022.
I make a motion to approve the amendment to Harbor Club Condominium PUD in accordance with the conditions recommended by the planning commission, specifically, conditions one through five from the 414, 2022 meeting.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Are there any more questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no? It is approved. Very good. Next, that takes us to new business. We've got a couple of special events. And first, we have Special Event 2022-15, which is the Independence Day Parade. Nice to see that back to occur on July the 4th, 2022, at 11:00 a.m. on Kalamazoo, Phoenix, Huron, and Center Streets.
Make a motion to approve Special Event 2022-15, Independence Day Parade, to occur on July 4th, 2022 at 11:00 a.m.
Second.
We've got a motion. We've got a second. I see Kate, I know one of the sponsors is here if they want to share. So you tell Kate, or Becky's going to tell us about it. Come on up, Becky, if you want to. Thanks for managing it. So just come on up and state your name and address and tell us what you're going to pull off this year.
Okay, Becky Burghert from 69022 County Road 384 in Geneva Township. However, I do represent the South Haven Tribune, which is one of the sponsors of this year's parade along with the South Haven Quanis Club and South Haven Rotary Club. And after two years of coronavirus, we're going to have the parade again. And we're already getting entries, and we're hoping for a really good parade. And Tom and Carol Renner are going to be our grand marshals.
Oh, nice.
Yeah. So I don't know if you have any questions.
Just glad it's coming back. A lot of questions. Is it going to come back? And I was hoping someone would pick it up. So thank you for picking it up. I know it's a lot of work, so I will.
And both clubs are very cooperative.
Yeah, you got good groups.
Very helpful.
Yeah, okay. Well, thank you again for sponsoring. So we've got a motion. We've got a second. Any other public questions or comments from you, Kate?
This will be the same parade route that we've used in the past, where they line up at the high school, go down to Elkenberg Park, where they head north on Kalamazoo Street, then to Phoenix. They're on Broadway for a short block, then back down to Huron, and then heading south on Center Street. So it's the same route. We're happy to have it back.
Okay. Any other council questions? Nothing. I've got a motion. I've got a second to approve Special Event 2022-15, the Independence Day Parade. All those in favor say aye. Pose no? It's approved. Next, Special Event 2022-16, the Juneteenth Celebration to occur on Saturday, June 18th, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Elkenberg Park.
Make a motion to approve Special Event 22... I think we have a typo. 2022-16, Juneteenth Celebration to occur on Saturday, June 18th, 2022, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Elkenberg Park.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion. We've got a second. Kate, I know you're here.
I see Ms. Crowley is here. So this will be the application for the Juneteenth Celebration. This will be occurring on Saturday, prior to the actual Juneteenth. And this will be from 7:00 p.m. to... I'm sorry, 2:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. at Elkenberg Park.
Sounds good. Get quiet. I sense the shh. Okay. Any other public questions on this one? Council questions on this one?
Yes, I wanted to ask Ms. Crowley what some of the things that'll be happening. Come on up.
Monique Crowley, 320 Fruit Street. So this will be very similar to the celebration that we put on last year. We're hoping to make it an annual thing, and I hope it gets bigger and better every year. So yeah, we're going to have a bounce house for the kids. We're going to have a vendor tent set up, or different tents, actually, for black-owned businesses to come out and actually get support from the South Haven community, be able to, you know, network, pass out business cards, sample products, whatever it is. Free barbecue, of course. Can't have a celebration without the food.
Does it cost to be a vendor?
The way that we're setting it up this year, the vendors did actually donate to the event to be able to be part of the celebration. And of course, all those monies actually go for the expenses that I'm using to actually put on the event. So you had to be able to purchase the tents, the tables, the chairs, things like that. And we're raffling off stuff, too. We've got six bikes that we're giving away. I'm hoping to, of course, be able to add some helmets to those. We've got some items for the adults. McDonald's has actually given us little coupons and stuff to give out to the kids for just like free burgers and stuff. Healthy Haven, here in South Haven, of course, is donating raffle baskets. Family Dollar has donated some items and stuff. So it's actually become a whole community event. Walmart is helping sponsor some stuff for us. Neighborhood churches have actually helped contribute as well. So it's just been amazing so far. The community support is great. Any other questions? Did I answer your question?
So all I have to do is donate something, and I can be, if I wanted to be a vendor.
As a matter of fact, the vendor list is actually closed right now. Yeah, we closed it on July, or June 1st, only because I have to have time to actually organize it all. Otherwise, I'd have vendors probably coming up until the day before the event. And of course, I can't have an organized event with that kind of, you know, stuff going on. So I did put it out there, you know, really early. I thought, you know, so it was open for about a month. But yes, as of June 1st, the vendor list is closed. But there's always next year because this is going to be annual. So you can get on there now for next year. You're super early.
That's a way to get them.
Any other questions?
No, well done. Good job. Good job putting them back on. So congratulations. If there's no other questions, we have a motion and a second to approve Special Event 2022-16, which is the Juneteenth Celebration. All those in favor say aye. Pose no? It is approved. And related, City Council will be asked to consider an application for a display of consumer-grade fireworks at 320 Fruit Street for the Juneteenth holiday celebration on June 18th, 2022, from 10:00 p.m. until 10:15 p.m.
Make a motion to approve the application for a display of consumer-grade fireworks at 320 Fruit Street on Juneteenth holiday on June 18th, 2022, from 10:00 p.m. to 10:15 p.m.
Second.
We've got a motion. We've got a second. Kate, application's in order. Everything's all good.
Everything's in order. This is similar to what we did last year. And this is the request for permission of private display of consumer-grade fireworks from Ms. Crowley's home at 320 Fruit Street. Of course, this will be after the Juneteenth celebrations wind down after Elkenberg Park. I have talked to Shays. They are going to be able to make sure that they're standing by should anything go wrong. But this is also the night of Harbor Fest, but they believe that they can have some units standing by.
Perfect. Appreciate it. Any other public questions on this one? All right, council? All right. We've got a motion and a second to approve the application for consumer-grade fireworks. All those in favor say aye. Pose no? We are approved. So congratulations. Good luck with your event. Keep us posted. Next, City Council will be asked to consider the approval of a commercial use license agreement for Dream Day Wedding.
Make a motion to approve the commercial use license agreement for Dream Day Wedding.
Second.
We've got a motion. We've got a second. All right, Kate fills in.
Yes, this is a commercial use license agreement for a wedding vendor. This will be taking place in the same spot. This will be the south end of the north beach. This is similar to the other wedding vendor commercial license agreement that we've done for the other wedding vendor, where they are charged $150 base fee plus $100 for each wedding. They have up to, they can be... They're limited to 50, up to 50 persons.
And this will be done for the entire year of 2022. And they will be responsible for cleaning the area of any trash that may have happened after the wedding. So that's what we have here.
Okay. Any public questions on this one? Council questions on this one? I would just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
You can go ahead. Okay. Um, I was just wondering, so I know we approved the two before, is there a limit of vendors? Like a maximum number of vendors for a year that we're targeting? We have not set a limit. I think that this being the first year of this, I think this is for, kind of, we want to see how things go with this year with these kind of agreements. So far, we've only have, well, if this one were to be approved, we only have three. And they are at different times necessarily. This Dream Day Wedding typically likes to perform them at sunset, which the other two, the other wedding vendor does them at different times during the day. And then, of course, the third vendor obviously has been yoga. So I feel like these are in different times during the day. Should council feel that there's too many, of course, we can always walk that back or not approve these agreements. But this being the first year, it's kind of interesting to see how these kind of get processed and how the beach is used.
Okay.
Which that just ties into what I was going to say, which is just, at the end of the summer, let's have, we can have review, let's just go over what were the total numbers, issues, concerns, what did we learn?
Absolutely.
To make better decisions going forward, so. All right, we've got a motion, we've got a second to approve the commercial use license agreement. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
No.
All righty, it is approved. Next, City Council will be asked to consider the approval of the purchase of the following components for the 12th Avenue Electric Substation. Here comes Mr. Bill Hunter, he buys the most expensive toys of, in the city. So first, I'll read them both. First, for $421,250 from Panelmatic for the control buildings and relay panels. And then, secondly, $140,700 from Power Link for the substation steel structure.
I make a motion to approve the purchase of the following components for the 12th Avenue Electric Substation, items A and B as explained by the mayor.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Bill, what are we building?
This is still actually the, the equipment for the substation that we have budgeted. This, this current year, we split the sub, the substation up. The total cost of the substation is 3.6 million, we split it up into two years. So this year, we have 1.8 and another 1.8 following. The idea of that is to buy the equipment. And our electric department, we buy all the equipment, then we hire somebody actually to build it. So we save costs that way, there's no upcharge on the equipment. We're usually saving about 10 to 15%. So this is an additional equipment, we still have more equipment to come. We have some bus bars, underground cable, fuse holders, trench boxes, and more transmission and distribution material. So we should have, if this is approved by City Council, we'll have 1.792 obligated. So it might be, depending on what the other costs in, the other equipment costs come in, we could be a little bit over, but that's probably what's going to be expected with this market. And we did increase it, actually budget-wise, we increased it by another, I want to say 300,000, but that still seems, things are coming in a little higher. We are working still with AEP with the, an agreement actually for facilities and, and still working with their attorneys as well. So I'm here to answer any questions this council might have about this equipment purchase for the substation.
Any questions of this group? And this is important because?
This, this allows us actually to distribute our, our load actually better. We had a, it was a study that was done that showed actually the main, the main substation, which is over by Lovejoy, was overloaded during certain parts of the day. This will help us distribute the load better and also provide us more reliability in our system in the future.
Perfect. Which reliability is huge. So, what's that?
And Bill, the Board of Public Utilities has also been involved and on board with this.
Yes, yes, I did actually. The, the Board of Public Utilities, their last meeting, and they, they authorized staff to move forward with these equipment purchases. So all this is actually going through with the, the BPU's approval.
One of the most important things we do, make sure the lights turn on every day. I always tell people, water, lights, right? It's what we do. Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Are there any public questions on this? All right, and no more council. I got a, we've got a motion and a second to approve those purchases. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no? Purchase away. And you're in the right spot for, you're up next. We will receive an update from Mr. Bill Hunter, our Public Works Director. Good evening, again.
Thank you, Your Honor, City Council. The following is an update for, from the Department of Public Works on projects we have undergoing. New substation, what we just referenced earlier, like I said, still working with AEP on a, it's called a facilities agreement, so there's a lot of back and forth, attorneys. AMI project, yeah, we're still waiting on meters, substation is in. We have been installing some of these meters at this time. And it's because it's the only meters we can purchase, we can't purchase regular meters. They are floating in, we do expect actually the spring, full implementation, the spring of 2023. Prior to that, the BPU will be making recommendations to this council on different fees because we're looking at an AMI system where now we're going to have, be able to shut off remotely. So our fees are going to have to change. We can't charge the same what we were when we physically went out to shut off, so we're going to have to charge a lesser amount. So that'll be presented in front of the, the Board of Public Utilities. The DPW locker improvements, we're still working on a design for that. Our air handling unit, staff is working with a separate contractor to install a hatch. Yes, we have to install a hatch in the roof to actually get the equipment in. So the hatch will be a, called a Bilco hatch, it'll be reusable. So in the future, in the next, if we're still here in 30 years, we can move these out more efficiently. They'll be much smaller though, so these ones that are coming in than the older units that are there. Still the DSMI, which is the Distribution System Material Inventory. I referenced to City Council on many DPW reports that we have to do 551 location verifications. We're still working on that. Should be in front of the, the County Commission on their agenda, actually for June 14th, for approval of our agreement for the ARPA funds. The blueberry tank, actually, the altitude valve, we're still under contract for Allied Mechanical Services. That valve will be 151,000. That valve will allow us to pressurize the system, it closes off the blueberry tank and allows us actually to feed from the low to the high. Cross connection inspections, that's an ongoing thing with the Safe Water Drinking Act. The inspections require onsite inspection and testing of backflow prevention devices. Rate design, a letter went out to all the ratepayers on March, a letter went out actually April, I'm sorry, May 17th. But it was March 9th, March 29th that the authority approved a 4.5% annual increase effective July 1 and each year until 2026. Wastewater Treatment Plant Project Plan, that was approved actually by the Shaw's Board. The idea is we're going to go for clean water SRF funds with the state of Michigan. This will involve actually some loan forgiveness. That means actually that they forgive a part of the loan, the state does, which is then us leveraging our local dollars to get more, to get, you know, more done. And we don't know what this loan forgiveness is going to be, the state's keeping that actually very close at this time, but there will be some loan forgiveness. Kids Corner Phase 2, we're working on bid specifications for a request for proposals for design and build of the play structure. That should be going out soon. The pier and railing and gate, we, we're building those at this time, or they're probably already built, my apologies. And, but we're waiting actually on agreement from the Army Corps of Engineers, which should be somewhere around September, October, to get an agreement. And Life Jacket Loner Station, we're working with the Safe Kids Greater South Haven to install loner jacket stations at the South Beach. That'll be placed on the Parks Commission agenda for discussion and recommendation. Is there anything that City Council would like me to expand on with this DPW report or anything other DPW-related?
Questions? Go ahead.
Bill, I have a question. So we've got a couple of things we're working with, with the Army Corps of Engineers. One thing that I've heard about is there are some issues with the South Pier, some like holes, damaged concrete, things like that, that could present tripping hazards. And I'm wondering, is, is that something we would need, also the Army Corps of Engineers, to, to make repairs to? Or have you heard of anything like this?
I actually met them recently, about two weeks ago, I did a walkthrough with them. And they, they did acknowledge actually the, that this, it's in pretty bad shape, they called it. They did recommend actually maybe some community outreach by us, maybe to put some. They, they did add, they, they hinted to me to talk to other communities about what other communities did for outreach. Similar to what Grand Haven must have done to do their repairs and get their north and the south jetties actually rebuilt. But to answer your question, I can send them an email just to remind them about that, that there's repairs that need to be done. But we probably should as a community start maybe putting some pressure on them, I would say. Because it's not a very walkable surface.
Thank you. Not at all. And they rebuilt Grand Havens to the tune of several million dollars, as I recall, so. Let's write a letter.
Well, that's what they were, there was like a nudge, nudge hint that maybe.
Maybe we should leverage or.
They recommended the writing, letter-writing campaign of some sort.
Happy to write a letter.
Squeaky wheel gets the grease.
There we go. Were you going to ask a question?
I'm just going to ask the same thing that George did.
Oh, okay. I'm just curious, the Alworth sidewalks, any, my dream to have a sidewalk down Alworth? I know it's not all the way done, but one section, I'll take it.
Yes, that's actually still planned for the fall this year, bike paths, 10-foot. So the idea is to keep applying for CMAC funding until we get it all the way to Monroe. That's, that's our plan. But yes, we're still planning on the fall of this year.
Be nice to connect that. And then, just as a reminder, I know we've got, I think you and I backed some emails, so we had a question regarding milkweed and butterflies and that we do not, I mean, I don't know, we're happy to participate, but I just want to share that we do not.
No, we do not actively mow milkweed staff. We, we try to educate staff to, milkweed actually is, the monarch butterfly uses that to nest and it's very important. I didn't learn that, actually we learned it from Bob Burr. He made sure, he brought me out to the, at the side and educated me on this when I first got here. So that's been instilled in me for quite some time now, so. But yes, that is our policy, not to do that.
So we keep the milkweed, whenever possible, we keep the milkweed up, so. Note to self, we're trying to help the butterflies.
That did remind me, going down toward the lighthouse on Water Street, it looks like that was landscaped a little bit on the side. What kind of plants did they put in there?
Oh, I don't remember all the plants. I can share that with City Council when I, when I get back, there was a planting plan. That was actually to stabilize the hill, that was budgeted a while back. We had a few recommendations from Edgewater. The, one was actually to install a wall. The other one was to install the planting plus another, I want to say tile system. And then it was this, this, what the planting plan you have, that's now. There's a variety of grasses as well as small trees. The idea too, too, was to establish actually to where the, the trees actually on the bottom will be your higher ones and towards the top actually, so it doesn't impede on the view. We will watch it over time, just to see how that, how it does, just to make sure that does occur. But according to the plants that were planted there, that's how that should be. And that should actually stabilize the hills, very much so.
Okay.
And I believe this is the planting plan that you did have the Parks Commission look over?
Correct.
Okay, awesome.
All right, I think we're good. Thank you, Bill. Appreciate it, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right. Next, citizens of the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. If there's something that's not already been talked about, you'd like to come up and discuss it? Just come on up, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes, we'll hear what you got to say. Good evening, Rosalie.
Good evening, happy Pride Month, I'm Rosalie Placati, 559 Row Boulevard, and I'm representing the Interfaith Action Consortium.
Hi, I'm Kathy Caldwell, I'm representing the Progressors of South Haven, and I live at 506 Humphrey Street.
Danielle Vinstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard, and I am a volunteer at the Out Center, which is physically located in Benton Harbor, but serves the tri-county region.
So thank you, hi, everybody. I thought it was going to be a much longer, longer meeting, so thanks, Bill. And actually, thanks, Bill, for those mediums. Did he leave? Did Bill leave? Is he back there? Oh, hey, Bill. And thank you for those, those traffic things. It's amazing, when we put up those traffic things, everybody behaves themselves, so, thank you. Actually, we're here, it is Pride Month, and I, I meant that sincerely. We are here, maybe some of you don't remember, but in 2019, we started a process to create a non-discrimination ordinance. And we got very, very, very far with a draft as of February 2020. It got stalled, and then it got stalled again because of the pandemic. As the mayor has said many, many times, it is an ordinance waiting on the shelf. It is ready to go. I think you would appreciate it. As you may or may not know, we are the last lakefront city that does not have an NDO. All of our organizations that here and who, let's see, who's not here tonight is our diversity coalition, and even we have a young member from the diversity committee at the high school that's interested in being part of this. We'd like to see this moving. Now, I know very respectfully, you guys have a, a huge docket. But what we're asking for, we probably need a workshop with the lawyer to go over it again. And then we probably need a first reading, a public hearing and a pass. But I can't imagine that there would be anybody here on this, this council that would not approve of a non-discrimination ordinance to protect our LGBTQ family and friends and visitors. So, that's what we're here tonight. That's what we're here, hoping that you will consider as soon as possible. It would have been awesome during June to celebrate. We still have a couple of meetings, well, we have one more meeting in June, but maybe we can get something going or at least to announce. So, does anybody have any questions? I've been in contact with Kate and the mayor quite a bit, yes?
It's my understanding that the NDO, when it was first brought up, there was two issues. One is employment, and one is housing, non-discrimination for those two issues, correct? And now, the federal government, I don't know, a year or two ago already passed the employment. So really, all we have to do is pass half of what we had last time, and that's simply not to discriminate against the LGBTQ community in terms of housing. Is that right?
Right, the, the ordinance, where we got hung up in 2019 and 20 was actually the baker who did not want to bake a cake for a gay couple. And he went all the way to the Supreme Court, and he won. On freedom of expression or artistic expression. So that was a big hangup, that's already done. The ordinance that we had sat down with, with the team at the time, with the mayor, the lawyer, and our seat administrator, city administrator at the time, we were ready to go. It's, it's a very simple, okay, thank you, oh my gosh, I've never gotten one minute. But, no, it's very simple. And I, I assume as soon as we can sit down with the lawyer and, and the city, it's, it's going to be very clear. But we do need to get one on the books. We are woefully absent in our region, and I would assume you would feel the same. So thank you. Any other questions, anything from part of the team here? Anything?
Thanks for sticking with it.
I will stick with it, now I'm here all the time.
Oh, you will.
All right.
Okay, thank you ladies, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Good evening, everyone, I am Emily Hickmott. I am here as the Deputy Administrator of the Vamburen Conservation District, and I just wanted to verbally update you all on some of our programs. Hopefully, you've received my monthly emails to see the highlights of what's going on with our programs. So thank you for keeping up with those. But I did just want to invite you all and the public to our annual meeting director election and picnic that is coming up this year. We will be holding that Wednesday, July 27th at 5:00 p.m. And the Wolf Lake State Fish Hatchery has agreed to be our gracious host. They'll be doing an optional tour at 4:30 p.m. of their facility as well, if you have an interest in seeing that. We also have a fruit field day coming up at Oxley Farms, which is located in Lawton, that is open to growers and those who might be interested in learning about cover crops for fruit growing. We're also going to be talking about spotted lanternfly, which our CISMAs, so our invasive species team, is doing some surveying of this year to make sure that it hasn't made it to our part of Michigan yet. So there are some ways to prevent that, and we're going to be educating about that as well. Additionally, August 6th, we will be back in town for our recycle roundup event that we have hosted every year for the past several years, we're very excited to have that. That will, like I said, be Saturday, August 6th, and we'll be here from 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. We extended it an hour to make sure that we can get people through in a timely fashion and not have track backups. We'll be offering household hazardous waste, electronics, confidential shred paper recycling, and tire recycling as well. And I was so glad that Commissioner Patterson Gladney mentioned our summer education program. We've been very excited to hire seasonal staff for that and put together this program in partnership with this fish hatchery. And our libraries have been wonderful to start promoting this for us. We're signing kids up online, or you can call your library or call us to get kids signed up. So we're really looking forward to that. And again, those dates are June 22nd and 29th, and July 13th and 20th, from 10:00 a.m. until 12:00 p.m. We just ask that parents accompany or their children or guardian of some sort so that we have enough chaperones and everybody gets to experience the hatchery. And finally, I did want to note that hopefully you have seen our 2022 Food Farm and Fun Guide. We added the fun component to this year, so we have highlighted the many wonderful festivals and fairs happening in Vamburen County, with many of them occurring here in South Haven. And we have our green spaces in the county highlighted as well, so parks, trails, things of that nature. We didn't produce this during the pandemic, and so we are grateful that now that things have opened back up some, whilst we're still in the pandemic, that we are able to put that together and help encourage folks to safely get outside and enjoy all that we have to offer in Vamburen County. And I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have for the district.
Super cool.
I have one.
Go ahead.
Where can I properly recycle or dispose of those rotten one-pound propane tanks?
Yes, that is a good question, I wish I had my recycle guide with me. So we can take those at the recycle roundup event on August 6th.
On the 6th, okay.
Yes, but we do have additional resources listed online. We have an A to Z on our recycling resources, and it's just under propane tanks.
Okay.
But I can follow up with you via email, too.
Is the recycling roundup at City Hall?
That is a good question, thank you for noting that. No, that will be at the DPW building.
Okay.
So we have a nice, great route out there, and they're always so helpful. We really appreciate the city staff's support with that.
It's on the website.
It is on the website, yes.
It's really quick and easy.
Yeah, it's quick and easy. Yeah, exactly.
You guys have a great location for it, it's the easiest loop, so.
That's good. Can you leave us a copy of that little farm guide and tell us where do we get it? If people would like a copy?
Sure, yep, I brought 10 copies, so I will leave those, I'll bring them up in just after the meeting, if that's okay. And I believe we delivered some to the city, do you still have any in the office, or are they gone?
I think so, we usually keep them out there, so if they're gone, we can get some more.
Yep, yeah, we have more at the office, so we'll be sure to make sure you all are stocked up. And they're also available at the Visitors Bureau. So they're kind of all over, different farmers markets have them as well.
Sounds good. My only other thing would be is if you want to call Kate, you can go right to the beginning of the agenda and come in early, and I know you've worked all day, so.
I appreciate it.
Just let Kate know, we'll get you right at the start.
All right, thank you all very much.
You got, thanks for all your work.
I have a question.
Okay.
What's your specification for shredding? Paper shredding, so there's a certain amount that you will accept?
There's no limit on the amount that we'll accept for the paper shredding. We do have some specifications as far as no paper clips or binders, things like that. We don't accept CDs that might be attached to paper. So just paper, staples are all okay, but there's no limit on the amount.
All right.
Okay, hold on, this is really timed, so, wait till I start, all right? Really, it's meticulously timed. If I go a few seconds over, give me a minute. All right, go. Elaine Herbert, 404 North Shore Drive. "This is about zoning compliance and my home value. To the immediate north of my bedroom window is a two-lot, two-adresses, historically non-conforming property with one shared center driveway. Three small houses owned by one family since the mid-'90s. Never rented. R1A residential zone. New owners, a property LLC from Grand Rapids this winter gutted all three homes to the studs. No permit, none asked for, none given. Now surprise, three business STR licenses. I served on PC and ZBA for decades, and I trust that I know how to interpret the zoning code, and I've seen it applied hundreds of times. Section 1901, non-conforming lots. Uses and structures. Whenever, and I quote, "Whenever a non-conforming use is replaced by a conforming use, it must conform to the regulations for the district in which it is located." Section 1716, access standards. Driveways shall, at a minimum, meet the following standards. No driveway shall serve more than one dwelling unless the use is a duplex, a multiple-family structure, a PUD, an apartment building, or a special use permit is issued allowing not more than two dwelling units to be served by a single driveway." It's pretty definitive about that. This two-address property has single middle driveway, historically non-conforming, serving three family houses. It's not like one driveway on one lot, serving one house, like your house or my house. For all three homes and both properties to be upgraded to legal, conforming R1A status, like three new business STRs. In an R1A zone, it would require one driveway for each parcel lot, perhaps for each house, period. Again, it's two parcels, two addresses, why is staff considering this as one property? The northernmost address with two houses technically has no driveway at all and no parking. What about that? Section 1743 of the zoning code, a short-term rental business may not be. Section 1743 of the zoning code, a short-term rental business may not be established on a zoning lot that does not conform to the off-street parking regulations of Article 1800 of the zoning ordinance. The single driveway alone is disqualifying. Three houses do not get to use one driveway as a parking lot. Each of the two properties would still require parking according to Section 1800 of the zoning code. Is each renter going to go door to door and ask the other guy to move their car so they can get out? If you want to stretch this to being a shared parking lot for which there is no basis in the zoning code, then go to Section 1801, Off-Street Parking Space Layout and Standards, parking lots. The duplex that was built next to my inn in 2017 in an RM2 was strictly held to these exact parking standards. It has a single drive, which is legal for a duplex, but it still was required to have designated unit spots, a turnaround so nobody backed out onto a street, and individual, independent ingress and ingress. They were not permitted to park straight in a driveway. These are single-family residential houses on two properties in an R1A. To be legally elevated to R1A conforming use, they need a driveway, all of them, period, and their own legal parking, all three of them, each of them. Last Monday, I sent you all detailed information and asked that these licenses be suspended. I got no answer. Today, I went to City Hall to try to get an answer. Ms. Tungate told me there was no, there was adequate women in the driveway for six cars. And I quote, "What's the big deal, Elaine?" What's the big deal? There were other, there was other conversation, but that one sticks in my mind. No building permits. Two historically non-conforming properties granted a new, upgraded, significantly altered use despite multiple flagrant R1A zoning ordinance disqualifications. And now I'm told it's fine. And Kate wrote me at 5:30 this afternoon saying, "It's fine. They're not going to pull these. It's fine. There are six parking spots on that driveway." What's the big deal? Would new construction on this property get a pass like this, or is this just STRs? I got a little bit more.
That's your time.
What's a resident to do, just a little bit more? I have a little bit of an action plan. What do you intend?
Are you kidding me?
Mm-mm. Your time's up.
What do you intend to do?
Once you're seated, I'll have Kate respond.
That's my action plan.
Thanks for your suggestions.
Now, what do you intend to do?
If you'd care to take a seat, I will have Kate answer your question.
Why do I have to take a seat? I've been waiting all week for an answer to my emails or a phone call to say, "Hey, Elaine, let's talk about this." Nothing. I'm not taking a seat.
Elaine, I appreciate your comments. Kate, would you like to just, again, just reiterate what you said before, and then I will ask you to have a seat?
Yes, we reviewed this application, and we reviewed this. We disagreed with Elaine's interpretation. And again, I can be very clear about this, and I'll follow up with a very, very itemized letter from the city attorney on why we've received, why we followed up with this, why we found that this was compliant. I understand that you're not happy with it, but it's a non-conforming use that has been in continuous usage, in my understanding. So we will follow up on that, but I think we're done here for tonight.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else?
Joe Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. First off, I want to thank the city for their proclamation, church proclamation that was given to us on the, I believe, the 22nd. And also, I got a couple of items of concern. One, to echo the issue with STR homes going up, big homes going up, seem like it's a violation, a repeat of Clinton and Erie Street. There's one going up on Edgell Street, and I mentioned this before, that I was concerned that it would slowly get down into Ward 1. And that's exactly what is happening in our backyard. The neighbors have a two-story home, and this home is taller than the one that's two stories, overlooking our privacy fence. So, again, we have one lot left, and I'm afraid that's going to be a big STR home being put up on that little spot as well. So, I'm just going to echo the concern that most residents have with the city and how the city feel or failing to protect the residents from these huge homes going in as businesses. It's a zoning issue. I've said it for years that it was a zoning issue. I gave you examples of how coming up and down in South, Ward 1, a particular person wanted to cut hair in the homes as a size business. They were not allowed to do that because they were told those homes were not zoned as commercial, to be able to do business. Now, fast forward, we have all this stuff that's happening. It's like the Wild, Wild West. And again, I feel like the city should do all they can to protect the residents that's been here for years. My other concern is the new, I guess, ordinance or policy where they have stripes put on the end of these parking spots down in Phoenix. I don't have a problem with that. I don't remember hearing this was a new policy or ordinance place where if you're hanging out a little bit, you get a $25 ticket. But I came out, my truck is not that long, got a ticket. And I looked around, there were other trucks, commercial businesses, repairs, repair guys pulled out further than I was. No ticket. And I may mention to Kate about that, and she was supposed to give me a peel process for that. I don't have a problem with these rules. They need to be communicated to everybody, and if we're going to make these rules, we shall enforce them equally. There's a rule on the pier, on the beach, if you are caught on the pier, there's a $1,000 fine. Am I right, Kate?
Yes.
That has happened. They have caught several people on the pier. We have not heard about anybody getting fined. My guess is that you don't want to fine anybody $1,000 that's visiting this city. I don't have a problem with these rules, but they must be enforced equally. And so, that's my second, that's my concern on tonight. And at least communicate it. Communicate these changes. You know, I finally saw a little sign that said something, "If you're sticking out," but it needs to be communicated to the year-round residents. That's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I will just, if there was specific concern on an address, just feel free to shoot it to Kate. And we had, I know there's been some discussion about, we just discussed it a meeting or two ago, about the trucks and the long length, and we've had that complaint for years. The growing size of vehicles, the inability to navigate downtown, there's a ton of off-street parking behind our shops for free. So that was the issue. So, but good questions. We could put that in the waves, too, I guess. We could just do that, maybe just put a little segment in the wave, so. Okay, anybody else? Come on up. Just state your name and address, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Holly Anderson, and my address is 711 St. Joseph, but that is not my primary address. I am a short-term rental owner, and as you can see, I am not a faceless, nameless, greedy ogre that we have been made out to be. I'm actually a small-town girl that lives in Hudsonville, Michigan, married, mom of two teenage girls, and I'm pretty nice, like most of us short-term rental people are. So, little history on me. I grew up in a tiny town over on the Saginaw Bay. I came to Western to go to college. At that time, discovered South Haven and fell in love with it, and came here consistently throughout my adult life. Had some good friends from college who purchased a vacation home here, and so we spent a lot of time here and decided as a family we would like to do the same. Now, we were not in a financial situation to not rent it out, and so we decided to do that to offset the cost. And I fell in love with the experience of creating an experience for other families. I became very passionate about that. I realized that the demand was quite high, and it frankly was quite profitable for our family. It allowed us to have additional cash flow, which as a family was really helpful. So, I have since purchased two more properties. Does that make me a greedy ogre? I would say that it makes me an entrepreneur, and I will state very clearly that I'm not buying these properties or building this business on the backs of South Haven people. There's a highly symbiotic relationship between the short-term rental community and the South Haven community, between the trades that we employ, which I don't need to go through and state, you're all very well aware. I will share that I talked with several people that are on my team, my electrician, who was just doing some work for me this week, and I said, "Hey, how would you feel if there was business cut from your short-term rentals? Like, how much of your business comes from there?" And he said, "This whole thing really concerns me. 65% to 75% of my business comes from short-term rentals. That's what puts food at my table. That's what pays my bills. Yes, I do work for year-round people, but this is my bread and butter for my family." I asked my cleaning lady, "What happens? What, I mean, are you concerned?" "Yes, I'm concerned." 85% of her $1.3 million business last year was short-term rentals. Those are all people from here that she employs." So, clearly, there's also a symbiotic relationship with tourists, right? They come in, they stay, they spend money. And this is a tourist town, whether we prefer it not to be or not. It is. That is what this town was built on. It is what this town will always be. And then let's talk about taxes, right? What came out this week in the paper? How the Visitors Bureau invested $234,000 back into the community in 2021 for all kinds of really great things. Kayak and canoe launch, disc golf course, installation of the bike racks, et cetera, et cetera, some things for the South Haven community students at Kailhaven Trail, funding of all of these festivals. And where did that money came from? It came from the state lodging taxes for short-term rentals and hotels. So, yes, we pay a significant amount of taxes that funnel right back into the community. And that's not even our property taxes, which are incredibly high since it's not our primary residence. I have heard people say, "We don't mind tourists, let them stay in hotels, though." Guys, that's not, that's not the way travel is anymore. That's why VRBO and Airbnb are a multi-billion-dollar company. If you're a lifeblood, which a big part of it is, is tourism, families don't go to hotels anymore and put their baby to bed and pack and play and sit out in the hall so their baby can nap. They come together where they can play board games as a family and have coffee together and make meals together. So, I think we're all very well aware that there is a very vocal, small group who has a strong preference against short-term rentals. And one of the things that I've heard is that, one of the arguments I've heard is affordable housing, and that is an issue. It's an issue everywhere. That is not unique to South Haven. In 2021, housing prices increased 18.8% across the United States. That is the highest in 34 years. It is not unique to this community. And pulling short-term rentals from this community will not solve that problem. That's a whole different ball of wax, okay? So my ask today from this group is, I guess, for some clarity, it feels like there's some ambiguity. Will there be changes? Are they actually being evaluated? What's being evaluated? What's the criteria?
That was time, sorry.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Appreciate it. I will just say we are taking that up as a priority for our next fiscal year, which starts in July, to review our current ordinance, so.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I am bringing to your attention an item I've been unable to get in FOIA. This is not part of the ongoing litigation from the suit filed in Circuit Court on May 2nd of this year against the city and others for alleged violations, so this is properly before you. I have discovered there, a zoning ordinance amendment had been adopted in December 21st, 2015, by the city council, following a recommendation from the planning commission. There is no official document for the folder for 2015, and the inquiry to the city staff resulted in a FOIA request having to be filed. And from my thorough review and not finding any official document, but confirming the vote on the zoning amendment, I filed that FOIA request. An extension was taken, and that's fine, but all I'm trying to get is access to the ordinance book. And I did try to circumvent that by going to the, or find an alternative way, by going to the library to look up on microfilm, but unfortunately, their equipment's broken. So, my simple request was to see the ordinance book, but a 10-day extension, which is allowed, was taken. So now it's going to be three weeks for me to see this ordinance book. Why is this of a concern? Because it appears a very critical typographical error has occurred, that what was passed is not what's in the current law, and as far as I can tell, from scouring the ordinances, that section was never changed. So with regard to Section 405 in the residential, and also 604 in CBD District, height requirements were not, are not correct in the current ordinance. So in 405, what happened was it was supposed to be, the height was not to exceed 35 feet and two stories, but this two stories does no longer exist, and I cannot find where it was taken out. And that has a significant impact on our residential neighborhoods. For CBD, three and a half stories went to three stories, but it's currently still three and a half, and I know that was in front of the ZBA earlier. So, I think it's very critical that this issue that I've discovered, and I was trying to find out if it was an issue through the FOIA, and with the 10-day extension, now one week becomes three weeks, I just couldn't wait, so I came tonight. So, more importantly, this would stop the skyscraper homes that are coming up along Elkenberg. Now, it's not for the RM1, but it is for the R1 districts, and we have those happening. And so I respectfully request that the city council set for its next meeting a discussion on this ordinance changes and lack of continuity, a moratorium pursuant to zoning ordinance 212, which is allowed, to resolve issues that are important to the community. And I think we have issues that are important to the community with regard to height of buildings, homes in RM1, and that there should be a moratorium to evaluate this and make sure that what is in the books is really what's supposed to be in the books, because from what I can tell, it seems like the two stories was somehow missed. And so, towards that end, I would urge you to hold that this be addressed immediately, and that for any applications, building applications for more than two stories in R1, any district R1, and more than three stories in CBD be held. And that separately, but also important, I would also urge the city to clarify Section 2103, especially subsection 3, with regard to what can be done before zoning and building permits are issued. Because what I read from the zoning ordinances, nothing is supposed to be done, but what I hear from city staff is certain prep work can be done, and that's just not fair to us, not to have clarity about what's going on. I think a resounding message to the city council is, we need clarity, because there seems to be unequal application of the zoning ordinance, depending on who the applicant is, where the house is, whatever. So I think a moratorium for these issues that I've identified is warranted for the health and safety and welfare of our community, to dictate immediate attention to these matters. And last but not least, I noticed the new opt-out for papers. I'm glad it was addressed, but I think that it falls a little bit short. I would say that for STRs, they would have to opt in, because we already know people are not there. And that would address a huge litter problem from these newspapers sitting there, going into the gutter, going into our water, and also the resources to create them. And so, please address the elephant in the room. Please prevent littering. Thank you.
That's time. Appreciate it. Kate, I feel like we've talked about the height issue for a while. I mean, just, if you could follow up, that'd be...
I'll follow up, but I also know that we've got a number of FOIAs that we are working through, and it wouldn't be fair to jump the line with other people who've been waiting, so we will do our best to get to address.
Do our best to, to get, to address those concerns.
So, we've had the, it's, we've been through this a few times, so.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Yes. Please.
Come on up, Bishop.
All right.
Just come on up, state your name and address and?
I'm Dorothy Sherrod, I live at 875 Kalamazoo Street. And I want to be respectful. I don't want to, um, muddy the waters, but I'm sorry. The South Haven City was not built on the backs of tourism. South Haven City was built on the backs of men and women that worked here, that are lifelong residents, that have built up this city, especially the South Side. So now, what I'm seeing is when I bought my home on the South Side, nobody wanted to come and invest in the South Side. But now that we've put our labor in and we've built it up, now the tourists, there were nobody that wanted to be on the South Side. They moved out and they had nothing to do with the South Side. So, I stand here to say, South Haven has been built on the backs of lifelong hard-working residents. We've been here, we've worked, we've paid our dues, and we feel that we have a right, we have a right, because we have been here through the test of time. We worked, we paid our property taxes, and I don't feel that it's right for us to have to sit back and allow developers and those money-hungry people to come in and take over our community. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Is there anybody else before we go on?
Randy Cologne, 627 Superior Street. Um, I wanna thank you all for appointing me to the ZBA at the last meeting, I'm very excited to serve. Um, I didn't intend to speak tonight, but I do have a couple of quick comments that I just wanna add to the conversation. Um, I've been a bit of a fly on the wall, observing many meetings lately and, and trying to be, become more involved in the city. As I have met a lot of you lately that I didn't know previously, um, I'm a fifth-generation city of South Haven area resident, and it's very important to me to give back and help protect my home, because if it's your home, you're gonna claim it, it's your home, you're proud of it, you have to do your part to help protect it. And that goes beyond Facebook, as easy as that is, and I make my money off social media, so I hate to say it. For the ZBA, I do hope that anything that could be gray area from the city is sent to the ZBA, so we can do our part. Um, that's probably my biggest concern and worry as I take on this responsibility, are things not coming across the ZBA that maybe should? And then, opening the city up to liability, not giving us a chance to do what we're, we've been appointed to do. And I do echo the comments of the last resident. I have a lot of concerns about the gentrification of Ward 1, have a lot of concerns about friends and folks who can't afford to live here, make their homes here. It's upsetting, it's heartbreaking, there are heartbreaking comments at the last meeting, there are heartbreaking comments tonight. And when we think of property, I've always thought of myself as a capitalist. I work hard, make my employer a lot of money, hope to continue to do that, but lately, I've been giving a lot more thought to conscious capitalism and what's a commodity? And do we view the parcels in South Haven as homes and residences, places where people can make memories, or is it a commodity to just be bought and traded to the, the highest dollar? And, uh, hopefully, they'll rent it back to us. If not, I don't, I don't know where all, we're all gonna end up. So, I wanna thank everyone who keeps coming here to help protect South Haven, and I'm hoping more people will continue to get involved, as long as we can keep them here and they don't sell and move out. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. I'm glad you're on the ZBA. Anybody else? Going once, going twice. Kate?
Well, thank you. Um, I do have a couple of comments. I know that we are sending four of our staff members to the Lake Shore Equity and Diversity Seminar that we held this week, so we're very excited to have that. That'll be a continuation of our DEI efforts. Also, if you have not checked online, we have, we have added a new DEI page, so you can see all of our efforts and our, and our projects that we have been working on as part of our, the city's priority, the City Council's adopted priority, and of course, our commitment to following those and improving our efforts in that sphere. Uh, secondly, I do wanna give a shout-out and a thank you to the staff, the Parks Department, Erin Preeb, Ani Turner, and Suzanne Brock, and all of our assistants out there who have been putting in the flowers, because this is a very, a very fast time for us, springtime is a very jam-packed schedule to get in all the flowers, and of course, we had a very interesting spring where we went right from winter into summer, and now we're back into spring, it kinda feels like. Uh, so we had to, uh, we've just gotten the flowers up on the, the wall at the bank and putting all those in. And you'll see those, uh, those folks out working in our different parks, Stanley Johnson, Elkenburg Park, and of course, our downtown. And that also brings me back to, actually, the cemetery. I know the cemetery looks fantastic from Memorial Day. It is a very large piece of property, so we actually have staff in there five days a week. So if you see one section that doesn't look good, keep going, you're gonna find the other sections that have just been mowed. So it takes a process, and we're in there five days a week. So, um, give us a little bit of grace, because where you might see tall grass, we've just been working in the other parts. So, that's my comments for tonight.
I think grass is growing rapidly right now, so. Very good. Any questions for Kate? Nothing? All right, comments? I'll start on my right. Mr. Reeser, good evening.
This whole issue of short-term rentals is, it's kinda like the elephant in the room, about everything we're doing as a city. Everything keeps coming back to this issue. It affects our economics, it affects our lifestyle, it affects every permanent resident in this town. And I really appreciate the woman, I'm sorry, I don't know your name, but I appreciate you standing up, because some of the points you made in favor of short-term rentals are valid, completely valid. Many of the residents have stood up and given their concerns, and they're completely valid. I think us sitting up here, our job first and foremost is to represent the residents and what they want. Secondly, is what's best for the city, what we think is best. But what we think is best is gonna be largely determined by what the residents want. When you ask for clarity, I think everyone can get some clarity, because we've talked about studies, reading this Upjohn study, especially the executive summary. I think it has a lot of good information as it pertains to short-term rental. Here's my frustration with all of this. We keep pushing this thing back. Mayor just said July. That's okay, that's only two city councils from now. I hope that first city council in July, short-term rentals will be on it. We've gotta start discussing it. My real belief is, we're not a, we're not as far apart, the two, the two supporters of the businesses and, and the residents as we think we are. I think there's middle ground. I think there's misconceptions on both parts. I know, having watched this for four years, I know some of the pluses of short-term rent, of short-term rentals. I also know some of the horrors that people in our town, and I call it horrors, are going through right now because of short-term rentals, and how second and third-generation people are, are losing the quality of their life in their home and their neighborhood because of short-term rentals and enlarging homes. But I do believe that there is commonality between both sides, and there's misconceptions on both sides. I have listened, and my job is to listen, not to tell you my opinion. My job is first and foremost to listen. And I've listened to the group that's concerned about short-term rentals. And some people don't even realize what they are really trying to do. So, Mr. Mayor, I am looking forward to city council very soon talking about this, getting this underway, because the longer it goes, the more the two sides, and I hate to use the word "two sides," I corrected you on that. I don't like having it be two sides, but the two sides have gotta stop being polarized and come together. And I think we can. We may not agree on everything, but I do think if we at least get all the issues out and know what people want, then we can start to address it. But I don't think we can keep pushing this can down the street, and that's, as a city council person, that's my comment. I'm just frustrated that we don't address this. Thanks.
George?
I was very happy to see the presentation by the, uh, the South Haven Community Foundation, all the wonderful organizations that were supported by that effort. It just glads my heart. And then also to see some of the special events, the, the Fourth of July Parade and the, uh, the Juneteenth Celebration, all very positive, so that's, that's my comments.
Can, can you share with us, what was it like when they pulled the switch?
I, I wasn't there at the time, but, um, uh, it was, you know, it's, there's, there's a lot of times during the last year when we've done, like, at the nuclear plant, we've done this, well, this is the last time we're gonna do that. So that was just another example where it's the last time that, that breaker will be opened. So.
Interesting, I looked out, no more steam, so it's, thanks for your comments, appreciate it. Ms. Wendy?
Um, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy Pride Month also, and say that I would love to see the nondiscrimination ordinance adopted by the city. I think it would be a really big thing for us to kind of join in the other Lake Shore communities in support of the LGBTQIA+ community. Um, I would love to be a part of that workshop, conversation, whatever, um, I would love that. And also, um, kinda speaking to a few comments, including Elaine's, when she got up to speak about zoning and permits, and then also what Mary said, um, I feel like this is kind of a reoccurring topic, and I would love, as a city, for us to just, like, be really thoughtful in our process and our methods and make sure that, um, I think Joe said, the city should protect our residents, and I would just really like to see the actions that we're taking as a city, putting the residents as a priority, um, and just making sure that they are protected in our neighborhood when it comes to things like building permits and, um, yeah, zoning issues. So, those are my comments.
Brandy alluded to it, the people that come every week, thank you for the people that come every week and share their comments, thank you to the people that come occasionally and share their comments, and thanks to the people that don't come but send emails. We do read everything, I read everything, I'm sure everyone else reads everything. Thank you for your comments at all times. And then I just wanna say congratulations to the class of 2022. The graduation went great yesterday, the weather perfect, the sun came out and just in time, and it was a really nice celebration of the senior class yesterday at Radcliffe Field. Those are my comments.
Uh, I just wanted to make sure on item number 14 on the agenda, the clerk got my vote recorded as a nope. Thank you.
No comment.
Very good. All right. So we have three very young individuals in the room, and I'll just have them wave over there. Good evening, everybody. From the University of North Carolina-Chapel Hill, so, uh, the Morehead-Kane Civic Collaboration. I'll have you guys come and do it another time, how's that sound? I'll just, uh, I'll just say, you might see these, uh, young professionals wandering around our town, doing a little research, so. Mercy, wanna wave? And there's Sebastian and Michael. I didn't see Zoe, is she hiding back there? She's off researching, online, good. Okay, very good. So, uh, they're doing a research project relative to short-term rentals and their impact in our community as a college project. So, you might see them around asking questions, so welcome to all of you, great, great minds, so, uh, I look forward to hearing what you come up with. Uh, just wanted to say, one, obviously, thanks for all the comments tonight. Yes, I'll be curious to dust off that NDO again and see where we're at. We were, we were very close before, so I'm hoping it's not too crazy and we can get it done, so. And just wanna say, as you look kind of on the South Side, nice to see, you know, the field improvements going on, as we talk about, a lot of this discussion back and forth about housing and all this other stuff, we, we gotta continue to always, always figure out ways to attract people to our community. So, people are looking for, you know, young professionals, young families, you know, things to do. So as we look at the improvements at the schools, improvements in our recreation opportunities, that's, we should always be, that should always be top of our mind to figure out how to continue to attract people that want to move into this community. So, nice to see those improvements. Go schools, go, so I'm looking forward to seeing those new fields done, so. On that note, I will seek a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion second, all of them in favor to adjourn, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned, have a good night.